You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the June 24th meeting for the Michigan City Planning Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.AccessLaPorteCounty.org.
So the June 24, 2025 Michigan City Planning Commission meeting is commencing. And so call the order for that. And if I may ask Mr. York to do a roll call.
Absolutely. Mr. Balling.
Here.
Mr. Conley is absent. Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. DiMedici.
Present.
Mr. DePalma.
Present.
Present. Mr. Hoffman.
Present.
Mr. Clender.
Here.
Ms. Tejeda.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Present.
And Attorney Steve Hale.
Present.
Can you have a call?
Very well, the first action on the agenda is the election of a president. I am presently vice president, just sitting in for the moment. So are there any nominations for the office of president? Anybody?
There you go.
I nominate Bruce DiMedici for president.
I would second that nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Very well, we'll call that to a vote. Mr. York, could you ask him for a vote?
One person.
Absolutely. Give me one second, Mr. DiMedici. Mr. Balling.
I will clear Mr. DiMedici.
Mr. Dabney.
Mr. DiMedici.
Aye.
Mr. DePalma.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Clender.
Yes.
Ms. Tejeda.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Accept the position of president. Now we need to have an election of a vice president. Are there nominations for the position of vice president?
I'd like to nominate Steve DePalma as vice president.
I will second that.
Welcome, Steve.
Yes, you can.
No, I can't.
I respectfully decline at this moment.
And are there other nominations?
Do you want to do it?
Thank you.
Mr. Balling.
I'm going to nominate Rose Tejeda.
That's second.
Any other nominations? Mr. York, could you?
Will you serve if nominated? Okay. Just making sure. Give me a second. Mr. Balling.
Yes.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. DiMedici.
Aye.
Mr. DePalma.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Clender.
Yes.
Ms. Tejeda.
Yes.
And Mr. Warner.
Aye.
Congratulations.
All right, okay, the elections were over.
Now you need a secretary.
Oh, I forgot that. Very well, we, okay. Are there nominations for the position of secretary?
Point of order. Do we have to be a board member to be the secretary?
No. No.
Would you like to have more stuff thrown on your plate?
Too much already.
I don't know.
Comes all the time.
Actually, I kind of thought she was.
God. You come all the time. It can be anybody.
I'll nominate Brian Dabney.
I will second that.
I will have to decline.
So here's a question, sir. No, so I was going to say, so can one person serve two positions?
That's a good question. I'm not positive of my answer, but I'm going to say no. Because it calls for three specific offices.
Okay. With that knowledge, I will nominate Fred Clender for secretary.
I'll second that.
I'll third that.
Could you call for a vote, Mr. York?
Absolutely, Mr. President. Mr. Balling.
Yes.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. DiMedici.
Aye.
Mr. DePalma.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Clender.
Who? Yes.
Secretary Clender. Ms. Tejeda.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes, thank you.
Very well, so we'll move on to the approval of agenda, which I think was maybe out of order. But are there any questions or amendments to the agenda? All right, so hearing none, let's move on to approval of the minutes. Does anybody have comments or questions on the minutes from May 27, 2025? Very well, consider the minutes approved.
We don't, excuse me, we're not voting. We don't vote on that to approve.
Oh, you're right. You're right, Mr. York, could you conduct a roll call?
Are we for the agenda itself? For the minutes?
For the minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You can do both.
For the May 27.
Yeah, so for the May 27, 2025 minutes, I'm going to call the vote, okay?
Yes.
Mr. Balling.
Yes.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. DiMedici.
Aye.
Mr. DePalma.
I was not present, so I think appropriate to abstain.
Absolutely, got you. Mr. Hoffman.
As well.
Abstention?
Abstention.
Gotcha. Mr. Clender.
Yes.
Ms. Tejeda.
Yes.
And Mr. Warner.
Aye.
All right, well, the minutes are approved. There are no petitions listed on the agenda. Mr. Hale, are you aware of any petitions that should be listed on the agenda?
I am not.
Thank you.
None.
All right, then let's move on to old business, new business, the discussion approval of stormwater ordinance. And Mr. Hale or Mr. York, whichever you wish to go first.
Yeah, sure. I'll introduce it. This is a discussion for approval of stormwater ordinance. You may recall that in the last couple of months, we've had Mr. Al Wallace. He's with us tonight. We, in the last meeting, we had some questions and some edits that we needed to make. And thank you all for, those who reviewed it and gave us comments. We really appreciate it. It's not a burden. It's really, thank you for reading it. So, because it is a hefty ordinance and a hefty lift. But with this, I'm going to ask Mr. Wallace to come up here and just kind of give us an overview and answer any questions or however you'd like to proceed.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, commissioners, again, for allowing me to come tonight to discuss the stormwater ordinance. As Mr. York mentioned, there was a short discussion last month and there were some questions identified and explained that we would need some time to review those questions. So commissioners did submit some questions in writing. I think it's been very beneficial to kind of delay formal approval. I'm not going to go over all the questions, but there's a handful, I think, that are pretty pertinent and could help educate the board and help understand how, once this ordinance gets enacted, the plans for implementing this in the city in accordance with their MS4 permit. The first comment I want to talk about briefly is in section 46238. That's titled, "requirement to prevent, control, and reduce stormwater pollutants by the use of best management practices." There are two comments came up with that section. First comment talked about some ambiguous language that said, "The owner or operator of a commercial or industrial establishment shall provide at his or her or their own expense reasonable protection from accidental discharge of prohibited materials." There's a thought that the word reasonable could provide some leeway for someone to argue reasonable protection is all they need to be in compliance with the requirements. We reviewed that with our consultant who helped us prepare the stormwater ordinance. He agreed that there could be some additional language there. So from saying reasonable protection is required, we added some statements in there that says, "In addition to other requirements of this ordinance," and then we continued with, "the owner or operator must use these best management practices." So we believe we're able to strengthen the language in that part of 46238. And then second comment came up with regard to the same section. Earlier in the section, it talks about the department will establish requirements identifying best management practices for any activity, operation, or facility which may cause or contribute pollution. So kind of question came up is, how will the city verify compliance with best management practices, especially for smaller businesses or property owners who may not have technical expertise? Will there be a grace period for or support provided before fines are issued? So in response to that, when the ordinance talks about any activity, operation, or facility, that part of the ordinance is referring to two particular cases that are defined in the ordinance. One is storage of hazardous materials. So that would be any material, substance, waste that's identified as hazardous chemical. So that's one case where we would be looking for that entity to have best management practices to try and keep pollution out of stormwater runoff. The second applicable kind of business type is what's defined in the ordinance as hotspot development. And that originally came about from gas stations that have storm drains that drain into storm sewers. So over the years, MS4 programs required fueling stations to have best management practices to capture and remove potential petroleum products in stormwater. And then that's been expanded over time. So there would be facilities that are vehicle storage, vehicle maintenance, salvage yards, recycling facilities. So hotspot development refers to an entity that has these types of uses on their property, which could have pollution, get into stormwater runoff. So to prevent that pollution from getting into our storm sewers, there's best management practices. The best management practices could be filters and catch basins. There could be other types of practices. And then as far as implementation, part of the requirements of the city's municipal separate storm sewer system permit is, city staff are required to reach out to targeted constituencies. One of the constituent groups is commercial industrial entities. So we have access to fact sheets on how to manage grease traps, how to manage salvage yards, how to manage these different hotspots. We're trying to help keep pollution out of the stormwater. So it's required by us to reach out to these businesses, share best management practices that they can reduce stormwater pollution. So for, if there's huge multinational companies in Michigan City that have these types of chemicals, they have access to a lot of resources to develop their BMPs. If there's much smaller businesses that don't have access to the resources, the MS4 staff can certainly work with those individuals to provide some ideas, either structural and non-structural methods, operational methods to reduce pollution. And then in terms of identifying where these hotspots or hazardous materials are, there's a couple of different ways we do that. One would be through plan review of new projects. If we see plan review coming in for a new gas station, we would then make it a requirement of that gas station to have these BMPs as part of their design. Another area we do is every few years, we may reach out to the Indiana Chamber of Commerce, get a list of businesses per city, look at the standard industrial code for those businesses or the North American Industry Classification System, which might identify certain businesses based on their activity, salvage yard, chemical storage. And once we identify those locations, again, we could reach out to those individuals with the BMPs. And then the last part of that question was enforcement. Within the ordinance, it talks about enforcement procedures and it's geared towards initially, there's a mechanism to provide a written warning if there's something that's not up to speed with a potential location. And then that gives us the opportunity to discuss required remediation actions with a schedule for compliance. So as we, if there's a cases where we have to do some type of enforcement, our initial reaction is try and work in a proactive approach. We have to do written warnings because if we don't write down a document that there was a warning, then IDEM and EPA will not recognize that we did that. So we have to have written documentation and the ordinance provides for that. Unless, you know, there could be cases where there's a very injurious spill, where you might have to go into fines at some point. But our initial focus is try and work cooperatively with the businesses. Second area I wanted to talk about briefly is section 46239. And that talks about water course protection. And in that area, the purpose of that section is twofold. We want to make sure we keep pollution out of stormwater and we want to make sure we keep any flow restrictions out of our water courses. So this section talks specifically about water courses, which are streams, ditches, open drainage additions, ditches. The first part of the question in 239 related to ownership of property. And it also includes there a statement, "Every person owning property through which a water course passes or such persons lesssee shall keep and maintain that part of the water course free of trash, debris, etc." So this question kind of arose to what does the responsibility of a lesssee? So we reviewed that with our ordinance consultant and he agreed that we can clarify that language. So we added a statement in there that says, "Every person owning property through which a water course passes or such persons lesssee that has assumed the responsibility for managing a property." So we're trying to be more specific. And if there's someone who is renting a house out on a short-term basis and using a property that's different than an individual that may have an annual lease on a property who's required to manage the whole property, that may abut a stream or ditch. So we just want to make sure that either the owner or long-term lesssee who has responsibility for managing their property doesn't violate the ordinance, takes measures to prevent pollution from getting into the stream, and also do not obstruct the stream with potential bridges or structures in the water course. The second kind of aspect of that was, how would that be managed and implemented for the instance where there's a lesssee in a property? So as far as implementation goes, we looked at if there are potential issues in a water course, we're required by our MS4 permit in Michigan City to visually inspect all water courses, storm sewers, ditches, once every five years, once through the permit term. So as we're going throughout the city, looking at the streams, the ditches, if we see a case where someone may have constructed a structure in the stream, if we see someone allowing excessive pollution, sediment, trash, garbage getting in the stream, then we have to follow up with the requirement to reach out to those individuals and have that undesirable action stopped. So to do that, we would first check property records to see owns that property, contact that property owner, identify and make sure they're the ones responsible to manage the property. If they identify that they've leased that property to a different individual on a long-term lease, we would then approach that person regarding any type of corrective action that needs to be made. So really good questions. We're able to go back and eliminate some ambiguity and provide a little bit more direction on how those parts of the code are enacted. Also, for this particular one that talks about the owner lesssee, there's a concern again how that might impact short-term rentals. We did check the Long Beach Stormwater Ordinance that has the same exact language in there. City of La Porte, City of Portage, City of Valparaiso, all those stormwater ordinance have this same exact lesssee language. Other than now in Michigan City, we've clarified that a little bit to talk about the long-term property management. And again, that kind of represents the fact that surrounding communities and all across the state have adopted the Purdue LTAP model ordinance. The next couple of things I should be able to get through pretty fast is section 46255B. That talked about how we calculate stormwater detention requirements. So in the ordinance, we say specifically that it's the policy to discourage direct release of runoff from a new development or redevelopment without providing detention. So if a developer comes in, has a grassed area, they want to convert it to impervious, there's going to be more runoff. We don't want that additional runoff going into our streams and sewers and ditches. So there's a requirement in the ordinance to provide detention on site. So that's why you might see a detention pond at different places. There could be underground storage. But in the ordinance, we recognize that the location of Michigan City adjacent to Trail Creek on the south shore of Lake Michigan, for certain properties in the north end of town, it may or may not be beneficial to try and get that initial stormwater flush into Trail Creek and out of the creek before stormwater from the southern part of Michigan City hits that reaches Trail Creek. So we're not advocating that necessarily ordinance, but we are providing a provision in rare and unique circumstances where if a developer has a licensed PE engineer hydrological report of a watershed and can determine it will be beneficial to the city to flush out their runoff quicker than the rest of the city runoff gets there, there may be a provision to waive or decrease detention requirements. And then our view, the ordinance says that analysis would have to be adopted by the department. And our view of that adoption would be that developer getting on the agenda at the Sanitary District Board of Commissioners to submit the report and then get advice from district engineers on the efficacy of that report and then have the Sanitary District Board of Commissioners, the five-member board, approve or reject that request for elimination of detention. That way, there's a public record of any of those waivers that might have been done. And if a subsequent developer wants to come five years, 10 years down the road, there'd be a record that there was a previous analysis done that they would have to incorporate into any future request. So we're, just wanted to recognize with that language, there could be these rare, unique circumstances where it may be beneficial to not have detention. The next question came up real quick was Attorney Hale and Mr. York provided a thorough review of the subdivision and zoning ordinance for the references, the cross-references that go back to the original stormwater ordinance. So just confirming tonight that through that work, we are confident that all of the references in zoning and subdivision are addressed to refer to now the new stormwater ordinance. So that work has been completed. Two more comments real quick. One had to do with plan review time. Question was, what mechanisms are in place to ensure sanitary district as the enforcing agency provides timely permit reviews, inspections, and responses to developers and residents? Will there be performance standards or accountability metrics? So a couple of years ago, the state legislature passed a law that defined timelines for stormwater plan review. Those guidelines are for plans, land disturbance plans between one acre and five acres. The local reviewing agency has 10 business days to complete those reviews. For land disturbance greater than five acres, the local reviewing agency has 14 days to complete those reviews. So that applies to the stormwater pollution prevention plan. There's a companion document that has to be reviewed, the drainage plan. Those usually get reviewed at the same time as the SWIPS. And then in terms of oversight and management, all MS4s get audited by IDEM every five years. And one of the questions in the audit is identify the review times of the local review agency so the auditor can check if the city is falling within the 10-day and 14-day review time. So we track those and we'll be ready to provide that information to IDEM during our next review. There's also kind of an emergency breaker there. If the local agency does not complete the review within 10 days, the developer has the option to submit the notice of intent to IDEM and then begin land disturbance 48 hours after that's submitted. So there are different provisions in place to make sure the reviews get done in a timely fashion. And then in terms of inspections, as part of other aspects of our MS4 permit, all active construction sites in a municipality five acres and larger have to be inspected by the local MS4 onsite construction inspections biannually. And for construction sites less than five acres, every year, the local MS4 has to inspect 50% of those. So from plan review to active construction inspections, we have timelines identified in our permit language, which we get audited on. And then lastly, if an individual from the public were to submit a question or complaint that a construction site is discharging sediment into a drain, then the permit, MS4 permit for the city requires an active investigation to be initiated within 48 hours, two business days of receiving that complaint. So there are multiple timelines and measures within the MS4 permit to help us manage this and identify timelines that are used across the state. And then the last comment referred to the timeline for passage. We did identify to IDEM that based on the work we had completed early in the year with coming to the Plan Commission, sharing our documents, talking to you, now receiving these questions, we had identified that we would anticipate potential approval of the stormwater ordinance tonight at the Plan Commission. And then we would go to the city council for first reading at the second meeting in July and then have second and third readings potentially this August with potentially a workshop sprinkled in there to educate the council about the stormwater ordinance. So that is the official schedule we've identified to IDEM. If we miss that schedule, IDEM could make a determination we're not in compliance with our approval schedule and then issue a compliance schedule to us to meet. So if we can have a chance to move forward tonight with the approval here, then we'll get into communicating with the city council to finish off the rest of those steps. And Councilman Presby Wilinski is here tonight. He's also, the council lay is out to the Sanitary District. And he's been attending our Sanitary District meetings, hearing about the ordinance in the past. So and Brian Dabney is on the council as well. So we have a couple city councilmen who know a little bit about it. And we'll, and I think this process, working with the Plan Commission, senior questions, has, I think, positioned us well to know some of the points to bring to the attention of the council as we try and educate them to finalize the process. So that's the summary of our right now. And then finally, after kind of answering the questions, I had a final meeting with Skylar yesterday, talked to City Attorney Amber LaPage, and she's talked with Attorney Hale. So I think from a city team, we're all on board and we're all ready to go, pending any final questions from Plan Commission tonight.
Mr. York, did you have any comments?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Wallace for really helping us do this. It's been a long time coming, so just thank you. And, you know, it was, and just so you guys know, we did go through the zoning code meticulously, me and Steve Hale. I think it took us three days to do that for a few hours at a time. And we've, we, not only did we make the references, but we also cleaned up some language that makes it a little bit stronger of a reference back to this ordinance and so that it's not, can't be misconstrued of what we're talking about, meaning sanitary district versus stormwater, make sure that it says stormwater in there, where it really will refer back to the stormwater ordinance. So just things like that. We took the time to clean it up a little bit.
Mr. Hale, do you have comments?
May I ask Mr. Wallace a couple of questions?
Please.
Mr. Wallace, you've presented a couple of times before to this commission about this project and the stormwater ordinance. this project and the stormwater ordinance. So I know that most, if not all, of the members of the commission are aware of this, but there are people in the public that may be hearing this for the first time. Can you just remind us what precipitated the stormwater ordinance review and replacement with this new modernized ordinance?
Sure. In December 2021, IDEM issued updated general permit documents for the state that govern construction stormwater general permitting and also govern local MS4 programs, municipal separate storm sewer systems. That was a mandated update of the statewide permit, a mandate coming from EPA for IDEM to update that permit process every five years. So that permit was issued December 21, which took place January 1, 2022. And with all these new regulations in the construction stormwater general permit and the MS4 general permit, IDEM recognized that all ordinances, stormwater ordinances across the state are now outdated. So IDEM, as part of this five-year permit cycle that we're in, required all MS4 communities, generally cities and towns greater than 10,000 population and counties with urbanized areas are MS4s and are required mandated to update their stormwater ordinance. To facilitate that, Purdue University took a leading role and recognized, we're now going to have 180 MS4 communities now looking to update their ordinance. How are they going to do that? So Purdue assembled county surveyors, civil engineers, consulting firms, MS4 coordinators together and said, can we come up with a model ordinance? So they took several months to do that, knowing what was going to come in the permit. So by early 2022, University of Purdue, Purdue University LTAP program issued their stormwater model ordinance, and that's been adopted across the state. So it was a mandated request from IDEM to review the stormwater permit. Moving forward, once every five years, once every new permit cycle, we're going to have to come back and modify this marginally to incorporate any new items from IDEM. But I think getting through this update now is the major one, first major stormwater ordinance update in many years. And then we talked a little bit about other communities adopting the same ordinance. So since the last meeting, I did have a chance to go back, and I think you might have been given this little document. So this is a, the table of contents of the ordinance is two pages, which is very long for an ordinance. But then I compared what's in the Michigan City ordinance versus La Porte, Portage and Valparaiso. And across the board, all four ordinance have the exact same items, same language because they're using the Purdue ordinance as well. So that not only helps the city have the most up-to-date language, it helps developers know that if they're going to be in La Porte, Long Beach, Michigan City, Portage, Valpo, they're going to be having to design to the same standards. So it should make review process more efficient, go more quicker and end up with a better result across the board.
Very quickly as well, I would like you to address this question. There have been many eyes on our ordinance. We started with the template that Purdue University provided, but now you and others have put your eyes on this and made revisions and improvements to it. Can you just address that quickly?
Yes, correct. When Purdue issued the model ordinance, there was clear, big, bold language that this is a model ordinance and should a community wish to adopt this, they need to go through it line by line, first page to last page, and make sure it applies in your community. They had certain sections that said, these are optional, certain sections that said these are required to be complying with IDEM. So we started off with using our stormwater consultant at the Sanitary District to go through it. We gave our consultant a copy of the existing Michigan City ordinances so they can see what's in there now, our flavor for identifying terminology. So our consultants went through and kind of Michigan City eyes the model ordinance to make it consistent with current practice. And then other staff at the Sanitary District, working with City Engineer Tim Warner, and then yourself and Skylar from planning zoning point of view, Amber again from legal point of view. So there's several local staff who've gone through this to make sure it's tailored to Michigan City.
Finally, if I may, Mr. President, there are four documents that are the primary documents to be considered by you this evening. The first three are really a unit. They go together. Those documents are a proposed ordinance and two exhibits that are attached to and made a part of the ordinance. Exhibit A, if you'll recall, and we've talked about this before, exhibit A represents the technical new stormwater ordinance that will be in place if this is approved by the common council. Exhibit B are the changes to the zoning and subdivision ordinance that are proposed to you to make those changes to coordinate with the new stormwater ordinance. We all understand that an ordinance is not enacted by this body. It's enacted by the common council. We also understand that exhibit A and exhibit B as part of that ordinance are also enacted by the common council. However, it is the duty of the Plan Commission to propose changes to our zoning and subdivision ordinance. And for that reason, we should consider, how are we going to send this on to the common council? The zoning and subdivision ordinances should be sent with a favorable or an unfavorable recommendation to the council. So an appropriate motion dealing with sending this forward would be to send this ordinance, exhibit A and exhibit B, on to the Michigan City Common Council with a favorable recommendation for their approval of the project and enactment of the ordinance. The fourth document is a resolution. It's 2-205. It's a resolution of you, of this body. And that resolution acts as a certification to the City Common Council with your recommendation, favorable recommendation, that it go ahead and pass it. It's providing the background information that supports the changes that are presented to you this evening. So I'm suggesting that an appropriate motion would be to have two motions. The first regarding the ordinance and the two exhibits. That includes exhibit B, which is the change in the zoning and subdivision ordinance. And then follow that with an approval of the resolution of the Michigan City Plan Commission to send on to the common council.
Does anybody wish to make a motion commensurate with Mr. Hale's recommendation?
Oh.
Mr. President, you should open it up for public comment.
Public first? Okay, I thought I'd wait till after.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I don't know. What do you suggest?
Just making sure we didn't forget.
You know, I think we did the same way last time. We should, we should open it up to public comment.
First. Very well. Is there public comment on what has been discussed so far?
Hear ye, hear ye. Hello, yes, Scott Melon, 200 Campbell Place. A couple of things. I'm consistent, consistently impressed by Mr. Wallace. His experience and knowledge is evident. And I, as a citizen of Michigan City, I thank him for joining the City of Michigan City and helping us out with these things. He clearly knows his business and I thank him for his hard work. As I understand it, as we have been developing this needed update, we've cleaned up a lot of code, we've cleaned up references to cross-references in the building code and so forth. But as I understand it, this only applies to new facilities and infrastructure, not existing detention ponds or retention ponds or devices or facilities. I could be wrong on this. I would think I am because if an ordinance says you have a blood control device and say it's a detention pond and it's silted up, it's clearly not working. It doesn't matter. I don't think something can be grandfathered. Would I be right in assuming that this code doesn't make a distinction for existing works?
I'm wondering, Mr. Hale, do you want to comment on that?
I was going to ask Mr. Wallace to comment on that because I think it might depend.
I would, I would submit that if, if we look at our drainage plan as a unified system as we do, as a basin, if you will, that as part of a unified drainage plan, it all has to work. Parts of it can't just be like, well, that's old and it doesn't work anymore. It's like, no, it needs to be made to work. If I may, also, I'm not sure in the, in, for the days of review, it was a 10-day review and then a 14 days. I would just, I don't know if it's clear in the ordinance if that's business days or calendar days, because 10 calendar days is as little as one work week and a day, which for as much as I am for speed and efficiency in city and municipal government and approval, a five-day work week, it might not be enough to read time. So I would recommend business days. But otherwise, I know we need to do it and it's a good plan. And again, I thank Mr. Wallace and all of you for putting forth the effort on this. Thank you.
Mr. Wallace, I was going to ask you to address the pond because we have, and Mr. Warner's here too, we have made people address some ponds. We've taken it upon ourselves when we've scraped the lots, if you will, or started over where there was existing ponds where we, we did make them, make sure they're functional. But take it away.
Yeah, so two items concerning existing facilities. One, the stormwater ordinance includes what we call the illicit discharge determination elimination program. So let's say we have a large business with a huge parking lot and they have a adjacent stormwater detention pond. So when that pond was built, they may or may not have had a maintenance agreement that will be required now for maintaining that pond in perpetuity. However, if that pond had a mechanism to trap sediment, to keep sediment from going into the storm sewer system, and it's not functioning, we have provisions in the current stormwater ordinance and the future one that says if your pond is discharging sediment of an excessive amount into our storm sewer system, we can issue a notice of warning that says they have to do whatever maintenance to that pond to get it back into a condition to not cause a violation. So that's one aspect of it. And then secondly, it's, some of it may have to do with actual flooding within the private property itself. So if there is a, again, a big business center with parking, with a detention basin that's overgrown with weeds, fragmities, trees, and the storage volume of the pond is now less than it should be during major storms, that parking lot could back up and flood. So that's another way we can work with that business to do the maintenance on those older sites to get them back in working order. Moving forward, we will have maintenance agreements in perpetuity that are recorded on the deed that goes to future possible business owners to maintain those. But as part of our MS4 program, we're also looking at the historical ponds around town and how those BMPs are working. So we will be addressing that moving forward. And then the specific language for the review times, I have it written here pursuant to the Indiana Code, we must make a preliminary determination before the end of the 10th working day is how it's worded, and the 14th working day for the larger sites.
If I may, also it applies to expansion. So say they expand to double the size of their parking lot, there's more runoff, a bigger pond, deeper pond, it's going to be reviewed, that discharge is then reviewed again. And then also want to make, you heard reference to, Mr. Wallace added in there when he first got up here, that this document allows us to really address this at the time of development review, which is a process that we do internally. We do it at the Sanitary District right now. We bring any new developments, industrial, commercial, large lots, subdivisions, hence the primary plats that come in. We bring them. It's an opportunity for Mr. Wallace to say, this is what has to happen before we actually start digging holes in the ground and building ponds. He's giving them all this information upfront. So it's, again, it just goes to show you how helpful this document can be.
But that's a good point about the existing building expansion because was able to work with City Engineer Tim Warner on a project recently where there was an old detention basin that was pretty filled in, pretty decrepit. The new owner wanted to redo the building and the condition to redo in that building was start from scratch and fix that detention basin in the back. So there's a couple of different ways and it's on our agenda at the Sanitary District to, you know, work proactively to try and get those done.
I have a question for you, Mr. Wallace. Is there a system in place for inspecting and surveying the existing ponds?
Yes, we do have GIS data about ponds around the city. So the next iteration of that is now that we know where they are, we're working with our consultant to come up with the most reasonable inspection format to go out and take a look at those.
A quick follow-on question. Do you also have a list of the hotspots or hazardous material locations so you have a database to periodically or regularly go back and re-inspect those?
Yes, we have a historical list and we're looking to update that. Two ways we do that is, separate from what we've been talking about this whole time, there is industrial stormwater permit issued by IDEM. So we're looking at a small number of facilities within the city of Michigan City that have those industrial permits. They're outside the jurisdiction of the local MS4 program, but it's important for us to know what those chemicals are. So if they do have a spill, we know what's there, we know where to go to block off the storm sewer to mitigate any conveyance of pollutants into our storm sewers. And then we're looking at the publicly available databases of industrial businesses in town so we can map those as well. So we have some historical data and we're looking to improve upon that.
Any other questions from the commission? Very well. Does someone wish to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we send the new stormwater ordinance, the ordinance exhibit A, the ordinance exhibit B to the City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. Very well. Mr. York, can you take a roll?
I'll call for the vote. Mr. Balling?
Yes.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Demenici?
Aye.
Mr. DePalma?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Kalender?
Yes.
Mr. Hetta?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Motion approved?
Very well. Are there any commissioner comments that anybody has?
Mr. Hale, you indicated that there was two motions that were necessary?
Yes.
The motion to approve the stormwater ordinance 2-2025, is that what you were referring to as the second portion?
It would be a motion to approve the Michigan City Plan Commission Resolution Number 2-205 and certify the result of your decision tonight to the common council of the City of Michigan City.
Took the words right out of my mouth. I will second those words right out of his mouth.
I'll call for the vote. Mr. Balling?
Yes.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Demenici?
Aye.
Mr. DePalma?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Kalender?
Yes.
Mr. Hetta?
Yes.
And Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very well. Unless for other comments, I'm ready to move on to whether we have a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Thanks, everybody.